Is there anything else? Sorry, Vicki.
Yes, we have that right about now.
Yes, that's the only change?
Yes.
Okay, council have anything?
Uh-uh.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Diane to approve the agenda with that addition. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Shalan. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, you all received the March first, 2023 regular meeting minutes in the packet. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification needed within those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March first meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. We'll now go into our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Okay, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings. We'll then go into reports and presentations. Police Department monthly report. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor Council. October activity report for 2023, some of the numbers we had. We did 160 new traffic stops. We did 73 foot patrols. We did 40 patrols at the schools. We gave out 55 administrative citations for rear parking. There were seven accidents, 24 medical calls, 14 alarms, 17 welfare checks. We had six unwanted cursing calls, six true no problem calls, seven more versus this, and seven verbal disputes. And 24 assists for other agencies. That's about it. So, we're up 180 calls from 2022. Compared down from January to 45.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Public utility, oh, Public Works Department, sorry.
Evening, Mayor Council. Some removals, Captain Maturi, this could hold this pass. Our 20 full credit landfall truck did have an issue arising from your axle. This is something that happened last year. It has been repaired, it's back in service. Captain, on our way there, was fair. Our hauling truck that we used to plow or for those in the shop, just some minor repairs, so we put them out into place. Storm sewers, diamond catch basins, the main lines, we need it. Library, we did have an issue with one of the key boilers malfunctioning, causing a current on-site line in the building. Currently running on one or two boilers, which is fine, considering the temperature plus added. So we're working on getting some pricing and planning for replacement. Filling some larger top holes with hole bins. The arena, hockey season is going to end. All ice has been moved in the building as we change the whole potential usage. Pigment park playground has arrived. With that, I almost tell the spring, we can install that here for a storm floor, permanent I say, because. Questions?
Questions, comment?
Good job.
Thank you. Public Utility Commission report, that be myself. Public Utility met on Monday, March 13th. Basically, it was just a general meeting going through usage of water and electricity. We are working on securing a piece of property for a new well. We have to replace one of the pumps at one of our other wells. We've got a quote on that. We toured the depot feeds building, all that the Public Utilities has purchased that. And I think, you know, Ben, we're going to have you probably go down to Water and Light and help them set up a min bid type thing, so all that paperwork goes through there rather than up here. And then, because there's a lot of items down there in that building that could easily be sold. So, that's kind of the direction that we're looking at. But otherwise, not a whole lot of action at this last meeting. So, any questions, concerns? Okay, then we will go to Planning Commission report. Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor Council. In your packet, you have a copy of the Planning Commission agenda. We did have two public hearings. We have Chair Benway, who wanted to send a bar of souvenir vacation for her from his home. And the other ordinance was regarding maximum structure in the industrial commercial district. Building credit report, this month, or last month in February, we had eight permits. Total value being $3,000. And February 20, we had two, we had six permits, the total of $257,000. And the reason for that was last year, under $5,000, just for that new commercial construction of that, one by, what happened to it from last year? I guess in the funding report, we're at 304, or 7,000 at the end of two months. And a year ago, we were up here at 74,000. So, that's a good number.
I just had one question regarding the first bullet point on, the report says new dwelling with attached garage, but we're showing a construction value of 83,000. Was the new dwelling with attached garage a mistake? Because I looked over the permits and that didn't reflect.
I'm sorry, I want that.
So, on page 11, the first bullet point of your report says new dwelling with attached garage.
There's nothing there.
It also doesn't reflect in the value, or there's no permit either?
There was only eight permits issued, and they were just on miscellaneous residential. So the next one down? Total eight miscellaneous?
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Does it make?
It's fine. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Park Board report. Vicki?
So the Park Board met? Turn that on. That'll be good. So the Park Board met in regular session on March 7th, had a few things on their agenda. They did keep planning for their future trails, and so that'll be coming to you shortly to allow them to go out for getting quotes for that. They discussed the fountain replacement some more, and then also, they reviewed options for a tree memorial wall in St. Clair Lewis Park. So those are kind of all continued items that they're working on, so they have no new business at this point.
Questions?
What's a tree memorial wall? Are we, is this for all the trees that blew down in the storms over the summer?
Right now or in the past? And if you go in the park, you'll see little plaques at the bases of trees. Some of them are made out of the material that your name tags are, and then some are granite. And so, we're looking to do like a wall mural, and then the leaves depict memorials versus having them buried all over town.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Vicki.
Any other questions? Okay, Airport Board?
The Airport Board met in regular session on March 15th. Of course, the final closeout report for the 21 project, this is just ongoing, I think you heard that before, we're still waiting for MINDOT and the FAA to sign off on that. The final offer was submitted to the landowner on the land acquisition grant. We're waiting on parts to complete the fueling project, and that's Ben's project. They looked at, or they discussed updating the lease agreements for the hangars. They haven't been updated for some time, and there's some new language we should get included in that. They reviewed the CIP to look at a future project, and they did talk about the snowblower, having a snowblower out at the airport, and what the options were to purchase that. But they do have no action for you tonight.
Okay, any questions? Okay, then we will move on to action items. Approve advancement of patrol officer?
So the 2023 budget for patrol officers includes the addition of a full-time officer. The City Council approved the budget however it was understood. The position wouldn't be filled at the beginning of the year. Chief Fredericks is requesting the council appoint the officer effective May 1st. Preston Otter was appointed as a part-time officer on February 16th of 2022, so just over a year ago. He's now working in full-time for another jurisdiction. However, he would like to work full-time for SOC Center, where he can also work as a school resource officer. And so Fredericks is recommending that the council appoint Otter as a full-time officer with an effective day of May 1st. He's also recommending that he start at step two of the pay scale. So that is what the action requested is, is to appoint the appointment of Preston Otter as a full-time patrol officer effective May 1 at step two.
Questions, comments? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Preston Otter?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Any other last minute discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7B, approve ordinance 820 and 821 establishing ordinance managing short-term rentals.
So the Planning Commission, at its March 14th meeting, conducted a public hearing to consider an amendment to the city code, which would add a section on the governing of residential properties being used as vacation short-term rentals. The city has a moratorium on the new short-term rentals since August of '22, while this ordinance was developed. The Planning Commission, following the hearing, they are recommending that the City Council approve the ordinance. The highlights of the ordinance include that they would, interim use permit from the city would be required, and that would not be transferable to a new owner. So if the property sold, the new owner would have to come and go through that process. They would need a lodging permit from Stearns County, and that's kind of normally how it would be handled, they do actual lodging permits. You could have one unit per parcel, because they are primarily zoned R1. They have noise and quiet time hours. They have off-street parking for renters. No campers to be used as rentals. They have a minimum lot size. Garbage and recycling bins, et cetera, in a closed area. An emergency contact must be available. They have three violations constitute a potential revocation, basically this three-strike rule. Existing rentals, and there are 10, need to comply within six months of the adoption of this ordinance, and they would be grandfathered in as far as needing to meet the minimum lot size of the separation. The rentals are subject to lodging tax. There's one additional thing that the Planning Commission added, and that is a separation of 300 feet. So in Section 3, there's a new item, four, that says no vacation short-term rentals shall be allowed within 300 feet of an existing rental as measured from the property line. How that works out in the city is essentially, in any residential neighborhood, it would not exceed 25% of the homes could become transient in nature based on this 300-foot separation. So that's how that kind of works out. So also, this ordinance, if it is adopted, would automatically repeal the moratorium. So what we're looking for tonight is to approve ordinance 820 amending the city code by adding Section 156.091, establishing regulations governing the use of residential properties as vacation short-term rentals. And then also have ordinance 821 authoring summary publication of the ordinance.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions, comments, concerns?
I guess just one clarification on that 300-foot. Does that apply to the property? I envisioning maybe if somebody has a home with two or three potential dwellings within it, would that only allow them to do it with one of the?
Yes, because, and these are primarily in R1 zoning districts, which are single-family home dwelling units. And some of them have been split into like a duplex style, two units in there, one of which could be a rental if the other one was lived in by the homeowner.
And the other thing on the 300 feet, just to add, the Planning Commission went with 300 feet from the property line, basically, because you're living in a residential area, basically, for a residential feel. We don't want to ruin the aspect of that whole neighborhood by having short-term rentals sitting side by side all the way down the block, or around the lake, or whatever. So it would basically take away that whole residential feeling. So, that was the reason why that was put into place. The one thing, the lodging permit from the county is required, has to be renewed every year. And then, I think that's about it. Any other questions or concerns?
The emergency contact, I'm assuming that's something that is made available to the city when it says that's, or who is that?
When they apply for their interim use permit, they would need to provide that emergency contact information to us.
I just didn't know, it wasn't super clear to me if it was a contact for us to have, or if it was for people on site, or neighbors, or whatever.
It's for both. On site, they need to post the emergency contact, but then also, they need to provide it to us for emergency purposes.
Okay.
And on that three-strike rule, that's basically, they have to be legitimate complaints, basically, from the police. It can't be the next-door neighbor calling in complaining that it's noisy, and whatever the police or emergency personnel actually have to go there, and if they see something. Just to clarify that. The one thing I would ask in Vicki is, you said the moratorium ends on approval of this? Is that after it's been published, or?
Right, well, upon publication, yes.
Upon publication, okay. The existing rentals, which we have 10 of them right now, have six months to comply. So then, if they do not get their, the lodging permit from the county and get the public hearing for the interim use permit done within that six months, they lose the right, and then they're no longer grandfathered in?
What happens to any existing that might be in conflict of that 300 feet?
We've already talked of a few of them. Last night at the Planning Commission, we talked to them, and we said, if you're already running as a VRBO, and you are within the 300 feet, you'd be grandfathered in.
Okay.
But that's only grandfathered in if they comply within six months of passing of this, to get all their paperwork in. Otherwise, it's on them.
Yeah.
Nothing that we did.
I'm just thinking of also future possible sales of property, having the knowledge that that is a VRBO, or the neighbor's a VRBO. How do we get that information out there? I mean, do we have, all the realtors are aware of who's got a VRBO within the city? So that they're not, that they're able to notice the possible buyer, that this isn't?
Basically, it's going to come down to the realtor, or whoever that person is buying it. If they're buying it for a VRBO, it's up to them to do their homework.
Okay.
You know, it isn't up us to run out there and inform everybody of, okay, this lot is this, and this lot is that. They have to take some responsibility and do their homework before they ever get to that point. Any other questions?
Was there any other, I guess, was there a lot of feedback at the Planning Commission meeting, or?
No. During the public hearing that we had, we had two people speak, and that was basically a clarification for the grandfathering in, because they had properties that touched another one. And we, otherwise, we didn't have anybody say anything against it, the rules and regs.
Good.
So, that I noticed anyway. Vicki?
You're good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 820 and 821?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Shalan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7C, approve ordinance 822 amending zoning ordinance.
So the Planning Commission also held a public hearing on Tuesday to consider an amendment to the city code by increasing the height limit of structures in the industrial commercial zoning district. This would primarily impact properties south of the freeway in the new industrial park. However, it would apply to all IC zone property in the city, including those already developed in the prior industrial park. So, once you redo a zoning amendment, it's, everybody's owned that way. The hearing was to consider increasing the height limit to 80 feet versus the 50 feet, which is currently allowed. Due to the large size of the lots in the south industrial park, larger and taller buildings can be accommodated. When working on marketing the properties, it becomes apparent that developers will pass us by, because they don't want to invest time and effort in applying for variance if their building is taller, or has rooftop mounted equipment that might be taller than the 50 feet. This is the only, the only amendment in this ordinance is the height limit in industrial commercial zoning. There is a couple of things, though, that would have to be verified before someone would get permitted, and one of them is the fire suppression because of the height of the building, and the other is the proximity to the airport, and the height in proximity to the airport. So there's some extra steps that they would have to take in order to get an 80-foot building just to accommodate it. But other than that, just a simple change to the zoning ordinance is ordinance 822 amending the height limit in the IC zoning district.
Questions, comments? We had absolutely nobody on the public state anything on that one last night at the meeting. Do I have a?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Diane to approve ordinance 822. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7D, approve resolution 2023-22 authorizing inter-fund transfer.
So as you recall, last year, when we did the audit, and our general fund balance had decreased, however, it was within the parameters recommended by accounting standards for the amount of money you should have in your fund. In 2022, because we had some unforeseen price increases in operating expenses, we did not resolve that decrease. Therefore, we're recommending a transfer of funds from the hospital fund to the general fund. This does not mean the city's going to spend the extra dollars, it simply indicates a healthier fund balance for the purposes of debt reporting and auditing standards, and it would be more liquid in the event of an emergency. So what is being recommended is a transfer of $375,000 from the hospital fund to the general fund, and that is resolution 2023-22.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2023-22?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Shalan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7E, approve easements and waivers, author's addition project.
So after meeting with the property owners affected by the city's development for author's addition, easements and waivers were drafted, they've moved the, or moving easements, and there's an easement to be vacated, and adding new easements along the road rights way. And also waivers allowing the city to move back onto properties to accomplish the smooth transition from the property onto the new streets. The easements were also discussed at the committee meeting. After approval of the easements, we'll begin to meet with the owners to review and obtain the signatures. And you do have on your desk, and I emailed them a few earlier, copies of each of the easements, and then I think you have an aerial view. All the red ones are new easements along the property lines, and the yellow one will have a public hearing to vacate an old easement. And that's there, because that used to be the back of their property, and then they bought more land behind them. So we'll just essentially move the easement back to that property line. And so what we're looking at tonight is just to approve these easements and waivers for the author's addition development, and to authorize us to obtain the signatures.
Hearing nothing?
I'll make a motion. Did we approve it?
Okay, we have a motion to authorize the treatment of the author's addition development as it relates to privately-owned property as a reconstruct project, including the water and sewer mains.
I think you're on the wrong one.
I'm on the wrong one.
Right.
We approve the easements and waivers for author's addition development as presented. There we go.
Right, there you go.
We have a motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Shalan. Any questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Now we'll try to get to the one that I did. Approve policy and assessments for author's project impacted parcels.
So the Policy Committee, along with Keith Yap and myself, we met to discuss how the city's special assessment policy would be adapted for the parcels affected by our author's addition development. The committee recommends that the city treat the project as it relates to these privately-owned affected parcels as a reconstruct, which currently assesses 35% of the street, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and 100% of the water and sewer services. The current policy on reconstruct anticipates the public utility replace the existing lines. However, this project is not replacing lines, it adds new. Therefore, the committee recommends that the water and sewer mains also be subject to the 35% rate. The committee offered that the owner could request a deferral of assessments on the water and sewer portions until which time they utilize or hook up to the system. There are three lots in this scenario. There's also another option of making a 10-year limit on that, which we did on Elm Street for an owner in this situation. If the council, this is kind of a hybrid, that if you do proceed with that, we would then convey this to the owners, with the understanding that the final numbers will not be available till after bidding and construction. The council should also be aware that approval of this would also apply to other road extensions in the future, where roadways were not extended to the end of the lots following lot splits. So there's kind of a, we're not only setting it for this, we've got other areas, a couple other areas in the city that have additional land where the road didn't extend beyond it, and so we're assuming that this policy would affect those as well. So what we're asking tonight is to authorize treatment of the author's addition development as it relates to the privately-owned property as a reconstruct project, including the water and sewer mains.
Questions, concerns?
And I think I did send out to you the new estimated amounts, and then what could potentially be deferred if they requested.
Right. And each one of the property owners got received that?
The three that were majorly affected, I have shared that with them. So, because I've talked to, well, the one I emailed it, because I couldn't get in phone contact with them, the other two actually came into my office, and I discussed it with them.
Questions, comments?
I think it makes sense to treat these with that 10-year limit, like we did with Elm Street, just because it became kind of a discussion issue with that, or topic with that street. I'm wondering how many other neighborhoods in the future, I can think of like Second Street North, off the top of my head, but where else would we run into this with future development, that this would set a precedence?
There would be at Morning View, the road that comes out that would connect back to the public workshop.
Okay.
There's a little bit of area there, Kennicott.
Oh.
And Hickman. So I think those were the three that we really kind of talked about at the committee level.
I was just thinking outside of this, like this specific area, but?
I can figure the one out, Morning View.
Morning View, too, yeah.
Not a lot.
There's not a lot, but we want to cover that base, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel every time, and then everybody's treated the equal.
Right.
So, I know, we had looked at, the Policy Committee had looked at, on the deferral thing, the 10-year thing was kind of after the fact, wasn't it?
Right, that got brought up later, and I just wanted to offer that as another option. You know, we can say until you hook up, or until 10 years, or until the property's sold, you know, you have the option to put those parameters on it.
Comments, concerns? Shalan, you got anything to, if the 10-year thing is good or not?
I mean, the 10-year would, it sounds fine to me, or even when the property's sold, I mean, either one of them would be fine.
Okay. Joe, one year out of this, because you're going to be affected by the next one, so.
I agree on the sale or 10-year, because one could happen before the other, so just to make sure that we're getting paid back for?
Well, realistically, I mean, hooking up to it would, would?
Take care of that.
Right.
If the plan is for that, but, yeah.
And I got a feeling some of the lots that are out there are probably going to be sold. It's been already, you know, they bought them as an investment, and now with the, they're, they can turn around to sell them, and still, even with the assessments, be able to make a little bit of a profit off of it. That's the reason why, and what Shalan and I had looked at it, it was kind of like, this is a process that they're actual lot lots. You know, they didn't ask? You know, they didn't ask for the project, but it needs to be done. So by deferring yet for anything there, we're trying to treat it as fair as possible. Um, we need to get the water and sewer services into those lots. You know, things change over 10 years. You can say, say I'm never going to sell it, but then turn around and six years later, you need the money and you do it and you then that, then you're cutting into a perfectly good road and?
Right.
Putting water, sewer services in.
Yeah.
And it's only to the property line anyway. It isn't all the way into the property, into the lot.
Sure.
So.
And I guess to me, just thinking about it right now on the spot, coupling that with a sale might, I mean, if you do it 10 years, now it's 10 years for sure, but if it comes with a sale, I mean, somebody could sell in three years and then that could get you?
That'd be here.
Right.
So I think, to me, coupling it with a sale would make a little bit more sense.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
On what?
On what we just talked about with the 10 years or the sale.
I'm just asking.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Diane to authorize the treatment of the author's addition development as it relates to privately-owned property as a reconstruct project, including water and sewer mains. And we will do the deferral of assessments for up until 10 years or until property is sold or they hook up.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other last minute discussion? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Four in favor, none against, one abstention. Seven G, approve park board appointment?
So there's two vacant positions on the park board, which are two-year terms. The park board typically would have five members. So there are, of the two open positions that expire on December 31st, 2024, we do have a person that has submitted a nomination and that is Thomas Sam Barhorst. So what we're looking tonight is to approve the appointment of Sam Barhorst to the park board effective March 16th and expiring December 31st, 2024.
Questions? Do I have a motion to approve the appointment?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Shallen, second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven H, approve out-of-state travel.
So the EDA has been working with a company called Nature Energy to bring an industry to Stock Center that is, and they've invited members to travel abroad, out of state, to visit some of their facilities, which is in, actually in Denmark. Conversations have recently turned very positive for the city of Stock Center and the EDA has recommended that representatives attend. The city's out-of-state travel policy, which is attached, I can give you the whole policy, requires prior approval by the city council. Two members of the EDA, which is Heidi Leach and Jeanne Marthaller, have agreed to go. They have an estimate of the cost for the hotel and airfare for personages follows and the airline ticket was 120666, we're estimating the hotels at 750. The company provides travel via bus to various locations and breakfast daily. Additional meals would be reimbursed upon submission of the seats. So the cost will be paid by the EDA fund, is considered part of their economic development assistance to try to get, attract businesses to Stock Center. So what we're looking to do tonight is to approve the travel abroad or out of state for Leach and Marthaller.
Comments, questions?
Is it just in general they're going or is there a specific time dotted, not that I?
No, there's a whole itinerary of the different places they're going to visit, different plants they're going to see.
Is it coming soon? No, I meant, is it coming?
Like the 24th.
Oh, wow.
26th.
26th, 26th of March. Do I have a motion to approve the travel for Leach and Marthaller?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
We got Shallen.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other last minute questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Abstention.
Four in favor, this is none against, one abstention. I'm having trouble tonight. Seven I, approve resolution 2023-23 adoption of the Stearns County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So the Stearns County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan has been formally approved by FEMA and we've been a part of their All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, I think, since 2009. And what that is, is Stearns County has, as a group effort, all the cities and townships in Stearns County have a, a plan that we're all together on it and it makes it much more easy to manage, especially when there's a disaster. And so what will happen is if there is a disaster, being a part of this plan means we'd be eligible for FEMA grant funding and also grant funding for prevention of certain things. Like we're in there like to pay for maybe a storm shelter or generators or things in that nature that we could use prior to, prior to an event, to, as preventive measures. So by formally adopting the plan, we also, like I said, we become eligible for the grant funds to address mitigation concerns that are identified. And where they become available is if the state of Minnesota declares a disaster and then the funds get released and then you can apply for them. So all of this work has to be done ahead of time because you never know when something's going to happen and funds get released. So we've been a part of that, as I said, for several years. This action is simply a renewal. And so trying to think of what else we had in there, we had sirens, fencing around utilities. There was a big, a big push for a while to fence around wells and everything that could be subject to terrorism, so to speak. So there was that type of thing. And then, of course, storm shelters for the trailer park is in there. And I know there's one other thing and it's, it's escaping me right now what it might be. But what we would do then is we'll update our estimates on all these costs and that way, if money gets released, we're ready to apply. So, and this is resolution 2023-23 approving the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Questions? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-23. Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business, we have no new business. It brings us our, to our consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, of unpaid claims of $95,549.19 and January checks, paid claim slash payroll of $455,516.46. Is there any questions about the consent agenda as presented? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Informational items.
A couple of things, just a reminder of the local board of review and equalization, April 10th at 1:00 PM. Everybody will very shortly be getting their proposed property values for 2024 and that's what the meeting will be about. And then the second thing is we'll be doing interviews for the rental inspector, for the residential rental inspector on March 23rd. This is not the short-term rental, this is the long-term rental people. So after, we have four interviews scheduled, so that'll be good. Get under the wire before Heidi flies away.
Okay, any questions about that? That brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.